Evening. I will call to order the Select Board meeting on June 6 at 6:00 p.m. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 20f, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording the meeting? No, okay. Just for the record, participating this evening are myself, Liz Klein, Chair, Bill Ramsey, and Joe Fisher. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a6, to discuss potential acquisition of real estate. Before I entertain a motion to go into executive session under Item 2 of the agenda, I hereby declare that discussion of this agenda item in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Town.
So with that, I make a motion to enter executive session under Mass. General Law's Chapter 30a, Section 21a6, to discuss potential acquisition of real estate. The Board will reconvene in open session after the executive session.
I would second that motion.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We will reconvene in open session soon.
Are we convening this meeting of the select board at 6:56 PM? The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is approval of minutes. I believe we have one set. Are we ready to proceed?
Yes.
You ready?
Okay, I'm ready to take a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the minute dated May 23rd, 2023.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Jennifer, you want to join us? Explain what we're doing here? Yeah, come right up here.
Okay. I'm Jennifer Young. I'm the Director of the Hingham Senior Center. And I am asking that the Select Board for the Town of Hingham to recognize moving forward World Elder Abuse Awareness Day on June 15th. This day was launched in 2006 by the International Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse and the World Health Organization at the United Nations. And the purpose of WIED is to provide an opportunity for the communities around the world to promote better understanding of abuse and neglect of older persons by raising awareness of the cultural, social, economic, and demographic processes, excuse me, affecting elder abuse and neglect. And the Hingham Senior Center wants to invite the community to wear purple with us on June 15th in honor of recognizing the day to help support elder abuse prevention. And I just want to add, why purple? I thought it was a really interesting question. Because we associate the color of purple with royalty, dignity, and respect. And it's the same words we should be using to describe our elders.
Love that. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. We do have a proclamation. Do you want, are we ready to read it? Or do you have any questions?
I don't. I will say, I will say for the record, my mother is 99 years old. Just turned it. And I am very aware of elder issues. So I think this is quite appropriate.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Appreciate it.
Excellent. All right, I will start. Joe, do you want to, I'll do the first kind of four lines. You can do the next four. And Bill, you can wrap it up. Okay. "Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Whereas older adults deserve to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and vital participating members of our communities. And whereas in 2006, the International Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse in support of the United Nations International Plan of Action, proclaimed a day to recognize the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue. And whereas 2023 marks the 17th Annual World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, its recognition will promote a better understanding of abuse and neglect of older adults. And whereas the National Center on Elder Abuse, the NCEA, and the Town of Hingham recognize the importance of taking action to raise awareness, prevent, and address elder abuse."
"And whereas, as our population lives longer, we are presented with an opportunity to think about our collective needs and future as a nation. And whereas ageism and social isolation are major causes of elder abuse in the United States. And whereas recognizing that it is up to all of us to ensure that proper social structure exists so people can retain community and societal connections, reducing the likelihood of abuse. And whereas preventing abuse of older adults through maintaining and improving social supports like senior centers, human services, and transportation will allow everyone to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of our communities. End."
"Whereas, where there is justice, there can be no abuse. Therefore, NCEA urges all people to restore justice by honoring older adults. Whereas, join us in our engaging and empowering movement in putting an end to abuse. Now therefore, we, Elizabeth F. Klein, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey, Select Board of Hingham, to hereby proclaim Thursday, June 15th, 2023, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day and encourages all of our communities to recognize and celebrate older adults and their ongoing contributions to the success and vitality of our country. Signed, the 6th day of June 2023, Elizabeth F. Klein, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey."
"So with that, I'd like to make a motion to proclaim Thursday, June 15th, 2023, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in the Town of Hingham."
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to the event. Okay. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the issuance of a series of special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Untold Brewing for the Green at Derby Street Shops Summer Community Beer Garden to be offered on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays beginning on June 9th, 2023. Mike, do you want to come up to the podium?
Hi, Mike Dyer, 156 Union Street here in Hingham.
Do you have an assistant with you?
I do have an assistant with me for this evening. Bryn Dyer of 156 Union Street. Here before you again for the third year in a row. Coming back once again to seek one-day permits for the operation of a community outdoor beer garden located at the Derby Street Shops in Hingham. There's no substantive changes to what you've seen over the last two years prior to this. The intent is, as before, to operate primarily on Saturdays with a few select Fridays and Sundays kind of sprinkled in over the course of the summer, ideally starting this weekend and running into October. As before, working with our friends and partners at WS Development. There'll be a mix of community and family programming scheduled throughout the season. You know, the benefit this year that we've added is the relationship with our year-round taproom that's located 100 feet down, down, down the parking lot, in which we'll be able to offer kind of a better food service program that we haven't been able to offer in the, in the past consistently. But beyond that, operating hours are about the same. Opening at 11:00 AM, closing at 8:00 PM, which is actually a hair earlier than last year's permit. And we're seeking 25 days instead of 30 this year.
Okay.
Open to any questions you might have.
Excellent. Well, I'm glad to see this is back. I know it's been successful in the past, so thank you. And is it rain or shine?
It is, it is weather dependent.
Okay.
So as before, ideally, we'd like to seek a little bit of leniency with you for probably three to five days. As before, we'll work with the town manager's office to cancel any permits as, as far ahead as we can in advance. No, no less than 48 hours.
Okay. Excellent. Well, the application looks in order. And I, you have a glowing recommendation here from Chief Jones, so.
That's good to hear.
That's nice to see. I know there haven't been any issues in the past that I've heard of either. And certainly a welcomed event. So nice way to kick off summer. Joe, do you have any questions?
No. I mean, I see your insurance is, is in order. And parking has not been an issue in the past. So I am, no, no questions.
Joe?
It's great to see you, Untold, doing so well. I know the last two years have been really successful for you. The opening of the spot-up in Derby Street has been wonderful. And appreciate what you guys do back, give back to the community, too. I know you hold a lot of events up there that are focused on our community. And I really appreciate you doing that. So very much in favor of this. And I'm sure I'll see you at one of those times out there, Mike.
So just so I understand the process, if one of the 25 is canceled because of weather, what is the process for it to be assigned to a different day?
Assuming that, that you don't wish to change it, what's happened in the past is I've noted, I've notified Sharon Parfetti, minimum of 48 hours in, in advance. She has canceled the permit. Last year, we canceled two, but didn't actually come back to you for them because it was so late in the season. There really wasn't such an opportunity because weather would, wasn't that point? If for, for some reason that those dates were canceled, we would come back to you and seek reapproval for any of those.
Right. So I don't think that the staff can just do it administratively. I think it would have to come back to the board.
Correct. Like she, she had not issued any new dates. But she could cancel them and basically retract the dates that we did misuse. If that makes sense.
Great.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay. I'm ready to take a motion.
I'm happy to make the motion. Make a motion to approve the issuance of 25 special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Untold Brewing for a series of events known as The Green at Derby Street Shops, a Summer Community Beer Garden, to be held on selected Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays beginning on June 9th, 2023, and ending on October 28th, 2023, as outlined in the letter dated May 16th, 2023. The hours of the event shall be limited to 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And such licenses shall be further subject to the following conditions. The event location is shown as The Green, located between REI and Coles at the Derby Street Shops, which space is approved for use for community events by the modified special permit issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals dated August 20th, 2020, issued to WSM Hingham Properties LLC, and shown on the Restricted Use Area Plan dated March 9th, 2020, and approved in connection with the special permit. In order to comply with the special permit, the event location shall maintain a minimum six, six-foot-wide pathway between the rear and main parking fields. Access shall be made to the fire sprinkler connection on the Coles building facade. And all applicable permits shall be obtained from the Board of Health.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Really appreciate it.
Take care. Have a good.
Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Preferred Mechanical for Hingham Town Hall HVAC Maintenance and Repair. Jeff, it's you. Joining us?
And Liz, I can, I can introduce this.
Okay. Horatio, welcome. All right, Michelle, I'll turn it over to you.
I'm pinch hitting for Kathy Riley tonight because she worked with, with Jeff on this. So Jeff and we are here to talk a little bit about our HVAC preventative maintenance and repair contract with Town Hall. This is not typically something that we've done in the past on a multi-year basis. We've worked with Preferred Mechanical for years at Town Hall and had very good service. But they notified Jeff and his team that the price would be going up significantly this year. In the past several years, it's been just under $10,000 for our preventative maintenance contract. And then sometimes we've had service calls, depending on the year, anywhere from five to 10-plus, depending on what's going on. Because the price is increasing, Kathy and Jeff worked on an invitation-for-bid process, decided to do a multi-year contract to make sure we were getting the best price out there. Preferred Mechanical is still coming in as the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. But the price is increasing. Instead of $10,000, it's close to $18,000 for the preventative maintenance. And then there's service calls on top of that. But we are looking at, what you see here looks like a scary number, $150,000. But that's a not-to-exceed. There's really very little chance that we would actually meet that.
I don't think it ever hit that number.
Yeah.
But no matter what, the PM did go up, I think, just over 8,000 from where it used to be.
Right. And just as a reference point, in FY '22, the last full fiscal year, we spent $24,000 total between preventative maintenance and the service calls. So it's, it's closer to something like that. This will be paid out of the Town Hall operating budget. We have an R and M line for HVAC. But we won't have enough in the FY '24 budget exactly. We'll have to look at adjusting it in FY '25. We'll, we'll look at some areas to kind of make it work. But Jeff, also, the way that this is set up, it would be twice yearly preventative maintenance. We've used to do it three times in the past. That's really not needed.
It wasn't needed.
From an industry perspective, so.
It's outrageous for just a PM. You know what I mean? For that price, so.
So we've worked to try to, you know, get it to be manageable. But that is the contract in front of the board tonight. It's a two, two-year period. And then the town has. It's a two, two-year period, and then the town has an option to extend for a third year if we choose.
Okay. Do you want to add anything, Jeff?
No, I would just add, they're one of the original contractors from this building before we even moved in, so they know the building inside and out, so they're, they're a good vendor.
Yeah. So how is, so I see that it's, it's not to exceed 150,000 for the three years, and then is it billed just time and materials as they do the work or monthly?
So the PM is a lump sum, so there'll be one in the spring, they'll come in through the spring PM, and I think it's like 8,800, I can't remember exactly what it is. Then they do another one, we have it like late fall, get ready for the winter, they'll do another PM there.
Okay.
And that's it. That's the only guaranteed money of that contract.
Okay.
Everything else will fluctuate depending on service calls.
Okay.
And we do our best to keep the calls down as much as possible.
Unless you want me to start talking about refrigerating.
But we obviously own, we only pay them for the work that they're doing, that they're responding to. Okay. Okay. Joe, do you have any questions?
Yes, so the, the not to exceed price of 150, is it in any way allocated pro rata over the three years, like 50,000 each year, so they can't go over that, or it's just, it's on a cumulative basis?
I think it's a cumulative basis for the term of the agreement is the 150,000.
Okay, so worst-case scenario, they spend 140,000 the first year, they're still within contract, are they going to still be able to perform?
I'm not sure how that would work, actually. Kathy would have to probably answer that. I don't.
I mean, that's a low probability.
I think it's an extremely unlikely scenario, but we could work with Kathy on a change order or like an amendment to the contract if we did need to.
We don't want to up it.
But I.
I just want to make sure that we're.
If we hit that number, we got a major problem.
Everything in the building would be failing.
You need to get off.
Yeah, all right. And how many bidders did we receive on the?
Three bidders. Preferred was actually in the middle. The lowest bidder was disqualified because they didn't have all the credentials. They didn't have the proper licenses that we asked for. So Kathy disqualified him, and I believe she ran it by John Cofflin as well.
Okay.
Okay.
And may, maybe you've covered this, why did the price go up?
Well, they've been under the $10,000 threshold for over 20 years, so just the labor and materials, I knew it was coming sooner or later, went up, it just all went up. The prevailing wage rate went up, so they informed us there's no way they could do it at that price. So then obviously it went to a whole different bidding process, and then Kathy's like, let's do a three-year or a two-year contract, that's what we did.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
You got it.
Bill?
No real question, now we've used them in the past, obviously they proved to be successful, and if you and Ray have confidence in them, then I.
They're very familiar with the building, which is, you know, key for me, but, and then like I said, for the most part, me and Jeff, we try to do a lot of the service in-house, so, you know, we definitely obviously need the PMs, you know what I mean, because we're the size of our crew on what we could do.
Appreciate you doing the in-house work when you can.
Yes, yes, appreciate all your efforts.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just have one other question. So as I'm looking at the motion, it's 150,000 cap for, for two years, and then we have, there's an option to renew for another year, but does the, the cap stays in place, it doesn't increase?
I think the cap stays in place.
It's for the whole potential term, so we try to write it to cover the three years, but the third's not guaranteed, so I don't.
Right, so in other words, if we, if we elect not to do the third term, the 150,000 cap, it's not reduced per rad, it's, it's 150 even for a two-year period?
It is, but to Jeff's point, the, the only guaranteed thing that we will be paying under the contract is the 18,000 per year for the preventative maintenance, so it's really just kind of controlling the service costs and handling those as they come up.
They're not even guaranteed the service calls.
Right.
No, just the PM, yeah.
I could absolutely use someone else, like, and sometimes I do, depends on what the situation is and who I'm more comfortable using. They're not even guaranteed the service.
So this is, they do not have an exclusivity provision here, that, you can use whoever you want, even though we have this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, ready to take a motion.
I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Preferred Mechanical Services, Inc. for Hingham Town Hall H V A C Maintenance and Repair in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for a term from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2025, with an option for the town to extend for an additional 12 months.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you both for coming in. All right. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Foth Infrastructure and Environment LLC to provide engineering and consulting services to prepare the Town of Hingham's MEPA Expanded Environmental Notification Form for Inner Harbor Coastal Structures. Think we have J R Fry on the line? And John Cofflin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. And we will be, this contract will enable us to move forward with the permitting efforts related to the coastal structures in our inner harbor. The amount for this contract was approved at town meeting, and we are prepared to quickly begin the process of adjusting the design where necessary and getting these structures permitted so that we can move forward with the construction process down the road. Foth has a history of working with the town, and in the town's harbor for nearly 20 years, the principals on the project have that. In addition to doing a recent blue water plan for the town, they also were the engineering consultant to the state for the boat ramp as a recent project. The town has been very happy with their services over time, and we're looking forward to getting started on the project.
Excellent. John, did you want to add anything? There, I have a question, J R., while we're waiting. The contract talks a lot about standards. Is it you that's managing that? Who, who kind of manages that, that the standards are being met?
I'm the project manager for this contract, yes.
Okay, okay, excellent. Sorry, John, did you want to add anything?
No, no, I think J R. covered it.
Okay.
You know, Kathy went through the procurement process, and we, we read the contract, so I think it's in order to execute.
Okay, excellent. Joe, do you have any questions?
Yeah, and I'm not sure if this is for John or J R. So I understand that Town Meeting appropriated 360,000. Is the scope of work that was authorized by Town Meeting, is that fully covered by this contract?
It is. You know, well, I, rather, the, the scope of work that was authorized at Town Meeting was very broad, but it was, the amount was requested based on the scope and fee that Foth prepared for us. So we have a very specific scope of work that we outlined with Foth that will take us from spook to nuts to get the, to get these structures permitted and constructed. And that's all, that's all elements of permitting, so all of the state permits, but then also the local conservation commission.
Yep, so, I mean, I think I understood your question, but maybe it's, it's, I can ask John. So I just want to make sure that Town Meeting didn't authorize parts A and B, and this contract covers part A, and we have virtually no money left to cover part B. I just make sure we're not in that position.
No, Joe, the Town Meeting vote was to authorize for the permitting and design of inner harbor coastal structures, so it's identical to the way the contract reads.
Yep.
It was a very broad Town Meeting vote, so I think the real question is, is this all permitting that we need, or is there anything additional after this? But this should be, this is consistent with the Town Meeting vote.
Or does this cover all the structures that were contemplated at Town Meeting?
Right. Well, if the Town vote didn't get into specific structures, it was generic, so I guess, J R., is there any, any structures left out of this permitting, or is it all covered?
What was contemplated was permitting work associated with every structure between steamboat and right around the harbor to the bathing beach.
Yep. And that's covered by this contract?
Correct.
Yep, that's, okay, you've, you've answered my question. Thank you. No other questions?
Excellent. Bill?
J R., I looked at the contract, but just for folks who were zooming in and going to watch it mean later, what structures are being contemplated as needing to be permitted and going to be rebuilt down there?
So the structures that are contemplated for permitting and design include town here, the, the Veterans Park work, as well as the mobile station work, so all of that seawall protection, and then moving over to the other side, Barnes work, and that seawall all the way out to sea load work will all be covered under this permitting work. One, there is one segment of private seawall that will be permitted through the MEPA process because it is, because it is incorporated in our, our flood protection efforts, but the improvements for that seawall are all going to be privately paid, or, or, or there will be grant money now for them.
Great, thank you.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? Ready to take a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Foth Infrastructure and Environment LLC to provide engineering and consulting services to prepare the Town of Hingham's MEPA Expanded Environmental Notification Form for Inner Harbor Coastal Structures in an amount not to exceed 356,320.
Second.
A roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you, J R.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. I don't know if you have to stay on the list. Okay, next on the agenda is to consider approval of the Fourth Amendment to Agreement with Hill International Incorporated for Construction Testing and Inspection Services for the Public Safety Facility Project. Well, you do have to stay, J R. And I think we have Bob Garrity with us. Hi, Bob, how are you? He is needed. Are you able to unmute, Bob? Oh, there we go. That's perfect.
So yes, this, I'll, I'll introduce it. As part of the work at the Public Safety Facility, there will be a significant amount of materials testing that occurs to make sure that the quality and integrity of the materials that are used in constructing the facility meet all applicable standards. And so Hill and Kathy together, I believe, is that correct, Bob, worked on a procurement for the testing services, and, and Briggs was the most qualified bidder.
Right, right. Okay, so if I can understand a little bit, the, we have, the town has a prime contract with, owns project management services with Hill International. As part of Hill's contract, there is a provision that allows Hill to procure additional services if the town approves them for a number of services, and one of the most prime and main services is the one that's deployed today, namely for Hill to hire a professional testing company to perform all the testing required during a construction project. So our contract, our prime contract is with Hill. Hill, under that contract, is, has the obligation to receive proposals for certain specialized categories of work, in this case, testing services. They, Hill then evaluates those proposals they receive, takes up information from Building Committee, which they did in this case, our Building Committee, in some length of the last meeting on June 1, and we ended up recommending that Hill, that contract and Hill, the, that addendum number four, or amendment number four, I'm sorry, Hill's contract would be approved in the amount of $75,000, and I'll get to that in just a moment. The, so Hill procured written proposals from three very highly qualified companies, the two testing services. One was Briggs Engineering, one was U T S, one was Yankee Testing Services. It was a very detailed process that Hill followed. They requested pricing in a whole range of services, the testing services that will be required and some that may or may not be required, depending upon what happens, but the types of services that they received proposed, like a breakdown proposal from these three qualified companies, and such things as concrete testing, structural steel testing. They actually go out to the, the fabricating structures, steel, the design fabrication, they will go out to the fabricator's offices, you know, offices and facilities to make sure that everything is going to conform to its standards. They will, they will renew the welds, the steel welds, to make sure that they're structurally well, well constructed weldings. They do work on rock water roofing, they do tacking as testing in the field when necessary. They do masoning work, they do, they'll evaluate any subsequent additions that may be encountered that, that could be in cost for either additional work or verification, whether the materials that are encountered are hazardous material or non-hazardous materials, or some other type of contaminants, or even if it's just rock versus concrete, so they'll do testing of paving materials to make sure that we get all the right depth and quality of the paving that will be on site. They'll review moving materials to make sure the, the moving materials do make a standard in the contract. They'll even decide things and make sure that the landscaping has been done properly built. They'll be measuring, make sure we have enough water, we're supposed to have six inches or three inches of water, so basically it's a long range of different services, testing services, that will be provided by the consultants, the consultants here, which the recommending consultant is Briggs Engineering. So Hill got these free proposals, they, they give them in considerable detail, I'm not sure how much information came to, to the board, but it was given to our board as well as a detailed recommendation letter from Hill, who was the, owns project manager, recommending that Briggs was clearly the, the best proposal to do these services, both price-wise as well as, well, mostly price-wise, because they all voted, they all submitted proposals on what the different tests that might occur, and mostly won't occur during construction. Hill was clearly best, best priced, and Hill was, I'm sorry, not Hill, Briggs, and Briggs is also a very highly considered firm just from a qualification basis. So, so Hill recommended that the town provide. that the town provide, yes, namely Hill, with the amendment, in not to exceed the amount of $75,000. And of that $75,000, the, Hill will manage the provision of these testing services. So someone, someone from the town has to actually call people up and make sure, line up Briggs's work with the work of the contract, and make sure that all the testing is done in time to demand, so that it doesn't hold up the construction activities for information for materials that are provided in advance of the actual work being done. And Hill will make sure that the right people get that information at Briggs. And KDA, the designer, is also continually involved in all this too, of the contract, the contract that would be killed. So basically, Hill manages the services and Briggs, Briggs does, this is approved, do a whole, a whole range of testing services on the project. It's not to exceed the amount, so the actual services end up being required, less than $75,000. So $75,000 only includes Hill's, yeah, Hill's oversight of Briggs's services. I think the breakdown is about $67,000 for Briggs estimated. And Hill would get, under the contract, 10% of the actual services that are paid to Briggs. So that's what we're looking at, not to exceed the $75,000. So stand all that $75,000, that's fine. The town won't, the town will only be dangerous naturally, unless it's incurred.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So we're questioning that, although the, also, this amount has always been part of the budget, $75,000. So it's not as if we're asking for additional services, because the services that Hill will be providing are, were always contemplated as part of the contract, but we totally know that it's only been two years ago when we entered the original plan and budget.
Got it, okay.
So we've gotten the approval of $75,000, not to see, Hill invited to carry out specifically the testing services on the project, which will be performed.
Excellent. Thank you, Bob. And that was, you answered my question if this was out of scope, but it sounds like this was always part of the original plan and budget. So that's hopeful. It does look like the completion date has shifted by a few months. Is that because of the necessary testing, or is that just the overall project timeline?
I'm not sure. Okay, at one point, not too long ago, we were anticipating an 18-month construction period, but before we, just before we went to bid, the designer, KDA, and Hill, and the planning committee, looked at whether that was a little bit tight. And I know we agreed to have a total construction period of 20 months instead of 18 months. So I think that probably is the reason for the change in the date.
Okay, excellent. Got it. Thank you. Joe, do you have any questions?
No, Bob, I appreciate the explanation. So if we do authorize this going forward, when would, when would this, when would this start?
So when would the services start?
Yeah, like, yeah, can you tell, give us a timeline for it in terms of the building construction and?
Oh, for testing or for all of the, for all contracts?
For the testing.
Okay, the contract right now is going to walk, the groundbreaking is scheduled to maybe a week or two, and cer, the testing services would be done in concert with the overall schedule, the actual time when the construction services in question that are being tested, are about to be performed.
Great, thanks.
Stretch out over, most of the, well, they're really stretched out after, over probably, probably above 14 or 15 month period of time. Majority of testing will be done, if we're still doing the concrete work, the combination work, again, the, the structural steel work. But there'll continue to be a lot of testing, right, you know, putting the roof on, putting all the, all the different waterproofing materials, and then the landscaping will be at the very end of the job, and you see them some testing here too.
Great, thanks, Bob.
Joe?
Yeah, so I've looked at the amendment, and I know you've talked about Briggs as being the entity that would be hired. I don't see any mention of Briggs in the amendment number four. Is that because it's intended to be vendor neutral, or is there a commitment at this point to use Briggs?
There's definitely a commitment to use Briggs.
So.
But the town is in contract, and I guess if the amendment said it'll be, the.
No, I understand, I understand the town is not contracting with Briggs, but this is an amendment to allow Hill to do certain things, and it wasn't clear whether the amendment with respect to Hill was going to mention with whom they would be working. John, I don't know if you've got an answer to that, or?
No, I think the, I think the amendment incorporates Hill's analysis proposal to award to Briggs, so that's where, we're allowing the $75,000.
Yep.
With their proposal attached as exhibit A, which lays out.
Right, but the proposal is basically, it's the RFP.
But the whole package should be, it should be the full Fourth Amendment, 67 pages, that includes the entire proposal, what the work that Briggs is going to do in the amount of.
There's a letter from Hill, dated 8/2023, to myself as chair, and it describes the whole process and their recommendation, that they concede to have the ultimate, this is related testing from Briggs.
You know, actually, John, you're right. At the very end, I see where we've got it. Good, no, that.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a long one. It's like 67 pages, but that, that whole package is incorporated into the.
Yep, no, I do see that. Okay, that was my only question. Thanks.
Any questions or comments from members of the public?
I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the Fourth Amendment to Agreement with Hill International, Inc., for Construction Testing and Inspection Services for the Public Safety Facility project in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Second?
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It passes unanimously. Thanks so much, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is discussion and potential vote to establish a speed limit of 25 miles per hour in certain areas inside a thickly settled and/or downtown business district under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17C, and Article 25 of the 2022 Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting. JR, are you going to take the lead on this? I see we have Sergeant Kilroy with us as well.
Yes, Sergeant Kilroy and Chief Jones are both here, also, on the traffic committee.
Excellent. Hi, Chief.
As you're all aware, the traffic committee stands along with the select board and advisory, put forth Article 24 in 2022, adopting Section 17C of Chapter 90, which allows the town to, gives the select board the authority to set the speed limit on certain streets to 25 miles per hour. And while it has been a little while in the making, the traffic committee has now decided to put forth the first element of this, and propose what is effectively a downtown safety district that will establish a 25 mile per hour speed limit. And if I do have screen sharing here, let me bring up that plan. Sorry, I'll just delay.
Do we have the map on our end?
JR, I can bring it up if you cannot.
Oh, thanks, Carter.
Is it this?
Thanks, Carter.
Thank you. Is that the map you wanted, JR?
It's freezing.
That's the one.
Okay, perfect. Great.
So it incorporates the highlight areas shown on that plan, on Section 17C downtown area. As you can see, it begins on the east side with Water Street, connects over to North Street, across Mill Street and Station Street. It runs on North Street from the Otis and Summer Street intersection, down to effectively a crosswalk that is at 198 slash 200 North Street. It runs on South Street from the intersection with North Street to South Lane. It runs on Main Street to the property line at between 90 and 100 Main Street, and along Central Street to the property line at, I believe, 33 Central Street. It runs north on Fairing Street towards Otter Street, and on Lincoln Street from North Street north, and just over the hill. A portion of that was, we thought was necessary because of the hill there at the top of Lincoln Street, and we wanted to give drivers advanced notice before they pressed at the hill and came down the hill. So this is the, this is the first area that is recommended by the traffic committee to the select board for adoption of the 25 mile an hour speed limit. And taking baby steps a little bit, and we're going to look and see how this is received and how it works in practice.
Excellent. Just to remind people that the Article 25 from the 2022 town meeting, the recommendation which did pass was that the town vote to accept Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 90, Section 17C, which would authorize the select board, a bond receiving a recommendation from the traffic committee, to establish a speed limit of 25 miles per hour on any roadway in thickly settled or business districts within the town that is not a state highway in the interests of public safety. So that certainly was, was the charge for the traffic committee. Can you just walk us through the process? When you say we kind of, well, this is a baby step, and we'll evaluate, and I think probably make adjustments, or make other districts like this, what does that process look like?
So that, the first part of that process is upon the approval of the select board of the recommendation, the, technically, the speed limit becomes effective. However, it is not enforceable until it is signed. And there, there is actually one further step before it becomes effective, and that is, upon the vote, I will then have to note on Mastoff that we have established this speed limit area. Once Mastoff has received that, they will record it in their records, and the town will procure signage so that we can notify drivers that this area is regulated as a 25 mile an hour speed limit within these limits. And so at that point, once we procure the signage, we would have to install it. And once it has been installed, then it would be the responsibility of the police department to enforce that. They can talk about what their process will be for that. I would imagine that DBW's side of it, we're looking at probably three to four months tops by the time we have all the signs in.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you to the Traffic Study Committee and all of your work, JR. Sergeant Kilroy, did you want to add anything? Or Chief Jones?
Good evening. Sorry about that. Yeah, as far as the, when it is changed the speed limit, we'll do, like we do in other areas, let it change in the speed limit or traffic direction. We'll do an educational session first with the public, and then we'll start with enforcement after that. But it is a great first step, like JR said, in all of this new speed limit in town, it'll make the square and downtown business area a lot safer.
Great. This has certainly been a concern of ours, and I've heard from residents that have safety concerns. We've heard it from our students recently, too, the crosswalks and the streets in the downtown area. Are there any, any concerns or kind of unintended consequences for the businesses that have come up through, through your study of this?
There were no negative consequences that were voiced to the traffic committee, and my suspicion is that they will be happy about it because it makes, it makes both pedestrian and vehicular travel a little bit safer in this congested area of town for their customers to, you know, access parallel parking, to cross the street safely once they've parked, and things like that. So, no, I don't anticipate any negative consequences in that sense. The area itself is already reasonably congested, such that I also, it should not impact, you know, people's travel time. In reality, they should be driving a little bit slower through this highly congested area regardless.
Okay, great. Thank you. Bill, questions or comments?
I do, I have a couple of different questions and comments. First of all, JR, my thanks to you and the traffic committee for moving this forward. Very much appreciate you doing that. I know you meant this afternoon to do it. My first question is, Chief, you don't need to wait until the signs are up to start enforcement, right? You can, technically, you can start tomorrow morning if you wanted to, correct?
As we can start with education right away, but as far as enforcement, we'd generally have the signage in place before we start writing any citations or any violations.
Okay. I appreciate that approach. I think education's good, and then enforcement down the road is a good one. So JR, I applaud this as a first step. What I'm going to, I'm going to ask a couple of things of you tonight. First of all, I think we need to do more down there. This is, this is, this going, you know, I've seen distracted drivers, I've literally seen people drive by on North Street staring down at their cell phones. Not just the North Street issue, it happens all over the place, I know that. High rates of speed coming around the corner, you know, 30, a vehicle traveling at 35, 40 miles an hour in that corridor is unbelievably dangerous, right? So we need to get. So we need to get these cars to slow down. We've had numerous pedestrians hit. A couple of years ago, we had a child hit crossing in front of the post office area. We've had, you know, cars hit. I know Sergeant Kirori has all the history. Him and I have talked about this. What I would like you to do, JR, is, in fact, if you could do it within maybe the next sixty days, look at and maybe recommend other traffic calming measures in the downtown area. For example, I know you and I have talked about, I've talked to Sergeant Kirori as well, about maybe the entrance to the square, lights flashing like we have in other parts of the town. We have one on High Street and other streets, telling people what their speed is as they entered the business district to slow them down. I'd like you to look at possibly modified elevated sidewalks, similar to what they have in Quincy Center, you know, where they're not super high, but they get cars to slow down. Maybe a traffic island someplace. A resident wrote me this morning, said, hey, have you considered maybe a traffic island as you come off of Lincoln and you go down north? I mean, there's a lot of different things we can do to slow people down. And I think it's important to start looking at that. If I could ask you, maybe the traffic committee, to maybe report back to us in sixty days or so, that'd be very much appreciated. I'd also like the traffic committee to look at other neighborhoods implementing this in other town, in other parts of town. If it's thickly settled, I'm gonna give you a couple of neighborhoods right now that need this. Bradley Woods, Bradley Park, Liberty Pole, Crow Point, and many others. Those have come to my head. But I know that those residents would very much appreciate something this, like this as well. I know we gotta kind of take one step at a time here. But if you could do that, that'd be fantastic. And I, again, I appreciate you moving this forward tonight. And Chief and Sergeant Kirori, very much appreciate all you do as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I will add one note separately. And that is that we only have this authority on the publicly accepted ways of the town. So some neighborhoods which are private neighborhoods, I don't believe the select board has the authority to set this speed limit there. Although usually they sign their own lower than what is legal for the town to do. Is that correct, Chief Jones?
I believe that is correct. I don't know if I'll look it up exactly, but I think it sounds correct what you said.
I, I'm pretty com- I think the neighborhoods I mentioned are all, are all public ways that are maintained by the town. We plow them, we fix the roads. I think they would qualify as a public way under Mass General Law. But I'll check with Attorney Kofflin and we can, we can, we can work that issue.
Yep.
Great. So how is the traffic committee evaluating the next steps? The other areas of town that, where this will be implemented next?
I think the first thing that we'll be doing is putting up this first sign order. Look at the, the cost of, of that and the number of signs. Looking into what we have in terms of either grant funding that might be available or, or where it falls within our budget. And then we would do exactly what you said. We'd look at several of the neighborhoods around town. Particularly neighborhoods, we'd start with neighborhoods that see a lot of cut through traffic or where we receive a high number of complaints. And we would identify how, how much signage we would need, place the orders for signage and begin the process of rolling that out. And then make those recommendations back to the select board as we get these different pieces in, as we get the signage in and we're prepared to move forward with each element of implementation.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, just a couple of things. My, my understanding is that when the town invokes Section seventeen C to establish a twenty-five mile speed limit, that citations are automatically doubled. So that the speeding ticket is, is twice what, what it otherwise would be. And I want to know whether or not the signs that are posted will notify the drivers that now fines are doubled in these areas.
I was, I personally was not aware of that provision in law. So we'll have to double check that. Beyond that, I think maybe one of the bigger differences is that because it becomes a statutory speed limit as opposed to where we routinely operate kind of in a little bit more of a standard thirty mile an hour framework. But because it will be signed twenty-five, the police department has the authority to begin citations at twenty-six. So where they typically provide some amount of, I'll call it grace above whatever the statutory speed limit is, typically around ten miles an hour, they would have the power and authority to enforce at the much lower threshold, right at twenty-six.
So I, I will assume that you are not establishing police policy for what the grace period is. We'll, we'll be turning to the chief and others for that. But with respect to the statutory authority, I do have the law right in front of me and it specifically talks about this. So I just want to make sure that the public is aware and that the signs that are posted make drivers aware that, that fines are doubled. The next question, I guess it's more of a request. If you could let us know in advance when meetings of the traffic committee are being held. Because we get inquiries and we can notify our constituents. And quite frankly, we can announce it at our meetings just to make sure that the concerned residents are aware of your meetings, even though I know your meetings are posted. But the added publicity, I think, will help to make sure that you get the input that you need.
Yeah, sure. Well, when we post, when we post our meetings, I'll make a special point of notifying the select board.
Great. Thank you. Nothing else.
Thank you. Questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. Phil, did you want to, did you have a comment?
I do. Thanks. And thanks, everybody, for all your service on this. I'm Phil Evans and I live in the neighborhood of fifty-five Cottage Street. And I just want to thank the traffic committee, the police department and the select board for considering this change and speak in favor of it. And encourage as well the comments of a select board person, Ramsey, around additional opportunities to enhance safety and order in these areas and particularly at these intersections at North and Central as well as Main, Fearing and North. There's just confusion. I encourage you to go there someday, you know, on a Saturday and stand out on either of these intersections and watch as cars in confused manner, you know, approach each other and wave each other on, thankfully out of great courtesy, until somebody comes barreling through, you know, isn't probably as thoughtful or perhaps even aware of the confusion in the neighborhood. So I thank you for considering this. I'll remind you as well that in two thousand fifteen and sixteen, a group of neighbors asked you to consider, asked the select board to consider a four-way stop at that area. That may or may not be the right answer here. But I'm encouraged by the conversation this evening. And I just want to thank you and encourage you to consider, to continue this as well as to vote in favor of this, our part of this, this motion. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Phil. And Frank and Nancy Mellon? We're trying to unmute you.
There we go. Thank you. All we can say very simply is we are wholeheartedly in support of the lower speed limits. Some of you may know that we have been the victim of a person going too quickly through the square and hitting our house two years ago. The, we are constantly amazed at the speed with which people buzz through the square by our house, five doors down from Talbot's, into the square, coming from three eight back this way into the square, coming west. It can only improve the safety of the downtown area to have this reduced beneficial and to have better, I would say, at least more, more complete empowerment to the, the police except to do so. Wonderful, wonderful idea. Thank you.
Especially with the Benjamin Lincoln House opening up. We'll have all an increase in pedestrians coming from the museum to the Benjamin Lincoln House to the ordinary, so there will be a lot of crosswalks that are needed to slow down and so the traffic needs to slow down.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And we know who you are, but can you just state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Brandon Nancy Mellon, one eighty-two North Street.
The Samuel Lincoln Cottage.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for the feedback.
I agree. I think there's, this is a long time coming. And certainly the citizens have expressed that over a year ago. So I'm, I'm happy to, to move this forward and certainly continue working on this in other parts of town and, and looking at what else can be done in the downtown to make it safe for everybody. So I'm, I'm ready to take a motion if you, if you are.
I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the traffic committee and establish a speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour. The following areas are thinking as described below and on the attached map titled Section seventeen dash, sorry, seventeen C dash downtown area and dated June sixth, twenty twenty-three. Under Mass General Law, Chapter ninety, Section seventeen C, and Article twenty-five of the 2022 Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting. Water Street from the intersection with Summer Street to the property line boundary between parcel six-two dash zero dash four-two and forty-one Water Street. Mill Street, Station Street. North Street from the intersection with Otis Street and Summer Street to the property line boundary between one ninety-eight and two hundred North Street. Fearing Road between North Street and Cottage Street. South Street from the intersection with North Street to the intersection with South Lane. Main Street from the intersection with North Street to the property line boundary between ninety and one hundred Main Street. Central Street from the intersection with North Street to the property line boundary between thirty-three and thirty-seven Central Street. Lincoln Street from the intersection with North Street to the property line boundary between forty-nine and fifty-three Lincoln Street.
Second.
We'll call Bill. Joe?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And I am an I as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for the discussion and special thank you to the traffic committee. Appreciate all your work on this. Next on the agenda is update on the Hingham Master Plan. It's exciting. We have Emily Wentworth and Gordon Carr with us.
Hold on up. Good evening. Thank you for having us.
Thank you for being here.
I'll just make quick introductions and then turn it over to Gordon. Again, Emily Wentworth, the community planning director.
Emily, you are a little far from the mic.
Oops, sorry. I'm the community planning director, joined by Gordon Carr, who's both presently the vice chair of the planning board and the chair of the master plan committee that developed the master plan we're here to present. We're also joined by another member of the planning board, Tracy Shriver. We had posted this as a public meeting but don't have a quorum, so we don't need to open. We are joined by a former member of the planning board as well, who I'm happy to see is standing on.
Yes, thank you, Judy. And welcome, Tracy. Congratulations.
And another former member.
So if you bear with me, I'll pull up presentation. Gordon will walk us through it.
Thanks, everybody. So I should probably get closer to the microphone too. So I'm gonna look at you and Emily's screen and try and do it that way. Understanding that the chair could probably do this presentation at least as well as I could after her participation in the master plan committee. And I'll go relatively quickly on a sort of a recap, perhaps less for you than for folks listening or, or watching later on, and then get more into where we are today and where we're going from here. Let's go ahead to the, just to what is a master plan, right? So I usually start by saying what a master plan isn't, partly because of the title, right? So it, it, it has a vibe of being sort of a top-down command and control plan. When it, what it really is is more of a guiding document for the town to consider as it evolves, both, both physically and from a policy perspective. Generally speaking, the statute suggests or requires master plans updated every ten years. When we kicked ours off, the previous one had been two thousand and one. So we were a bit overdue and hopefully we'll be back on track on this for every sort of decade or so, particularly given the pace of change that we're all seeing. I think that, that is probably at least as timely as, as it was before. Although, looking back at two thousand and one, master plan, the number of recommendations that were sort of evergreen, right? And that really could, could mirror some of the ones we had included. And then the number of issues, which I'll get to later on, that were just not even a consideration in two thousand and one. And by the time we were doing it less than two decades later are really top of mind. So in order to get to this sort of master plan and this long-range vision, we started a pretty aggressive visioning process in the fall of twenty nineteen, right after the master plan committee was convened. We can go to the, to the next one, I think. I can't remember which one we did. So we went, because we had a large committee, there were fifteen members of the, of the master plan committee, which people sympathize with me in the beginning without realizing who we had on the committee because it was an extraordinary group. But we spread out quite a bit and, and did a number of visioning sessions large and small to gather as much input from the community and as, as many groups and perspectives as possible to try to frame this vision. We had, including some that, that the chair led within the school systems at the middle school and at South Elementary. I'm pretty sure that the middle school students that were in that just graduated last week. So, but getting that perspective as, as well allowed us to, and then the, the committee kind of spent a fair amount of time building this community vision that you're seeing on the screen, which I won't read. But it sort of serves as that overall framework of what we want our community to become, to remain, to lead in different areas. And from that, we went into the, the process of, of, of building the master plan under a certain set of, of guiding principles that the master plan includes. The core elements are, not surprisingly, economic development, natural resources and open space. I mentioned some things were different in two thousand and one than they are in twenty nineteen. Sustainability was not a word to speak of in two, in two thousand and one. And when we think of all of the issues that we're talking about, including some of the things that you guys were discussing earlier this evening, the importance of sustainability, particularly for our coastal community, was, was a big element of what we talked about a, a couple of years ago. Housing, again, that, that was a conversation, but a relatively quiet one in two thousand and one. Obviously, it's become a priority for us on our own and because of some statutory changes at the state level that Emily and I will be spending, and Tracy will be spending a little bit of time on in the next eight months. Historical and cultural recreation in, in a town like ours, you know, for example, one of the things that we put in the RFP was that there would be a historic preservation professional on the consultant team because it's such a major priority for all of us. Facilities and then transportation, not surprisingly, right? Those are, and I'll, I'll steal a little bit of my thunder later on. One of the recommendations I can now check the box on was, was opting into seventeen C, right? So that was a specific item that the, the master plan committee talked about a couple of years ago. So to be able to sit here and watch that happen this evening is, is terrific. So the major master plan goals under which, and we'll get into these pieces, are these So the major master plan goals under which, and we'll get into these pieces, are these on the screen. Again, I won't read them. All of you can, but they, I think they're universally acceptable, right? There's obviously nothing controversial in here. We save that for everything that falls afterwards. But it does, I think, set the stage for the Hingham that we want to preserve and the Hingham we want to become. That which falls under those sort of seven apple pie goals, there's 37 policies and then, because we couldn't help ourselves, 134 recommendations. That spans a whole range of responsibilities. You all, I think, may be in the lead at 65.
You are in the lead. It's close to half.
But I think I can safely say that those are not solely yours, right? That is going, many of those will be team efforts across a number of other, either appointed or elected boards. We were realistic when we were putting these together, right? The idea that we were going to get all 134 was probably pretty unrealistic, but it gives a pretty broad menu for all of those groups, allows us to look at that as we go forward as circumstances change, as fundings change, things of that nature, on where some of those recommendations can get prioritized. Some of them, if you dig deep, are kind of obviously sequential. Some can be moved based on priorities, circumstances, or, as I said, funding, right? For example, you know, coming out of COVID, which, remember, we, I think we had two master plan committee meetings in person and then went virtual from there. Thankfully, the vision process was all done really by the end of December 2019, so we had all of that information. We followed that with an online survey that also provided a lot of really helpful information, but some of the issues around health and wellness, you know, when we were doing the vision process, really didn't show up the way they may have manifested themselves if we were doing that same kind of conversation today. So that's the whole point of looking at those things kind of holistically, and that's where we're going from here. So both Emily and I, somewhat independently but collaborated, spent a fair amount of time looking at implementation structures. Oh, sorry, I forgot, I skipped over, just so that people can visually see what some of these recommendations may look like. I mentioned to you that 17C was one of the transportation questions. There are a number of others. Some of them are pretty straightforward. Some of them are extraordinarily complex and will take a great deal of time and a great deal of funding. We're carrying along a little bit of a cheat sheet of our own, where we can check the box on certain things, like 17C, like the Commission on Disabilities, like the Human Rights Commission, a number of these items that thankfully have been taken up prior to getting the implementation committee up and running. But after looking at and talking with both master plan committee members in other towns, planning staff in other towns, trying to figure out what the variety, and there's a wide range of different approaches to implementation committees. Some of them are sort of ad hoc. Town of Milton has had their implementation committee in place for a decade, and it rotates and all of that, but it's really a robust group that has been at work for a long time. So we've established an implementation committee at the planning board that will be advisory to the planning board, really to work with all of those other boards and commissions to track that progress, to prepare the reports and organize that, to be that sounding board, that clearinghouse on what those recommendations, which should get advanced and when. We did include master plan summits to update the community on progress and that kind of stuff annually. We're a little behind, but we'll catch up on those once the committee's in place. And we had, we said between seven and nine members, I believe, Emily, is that right? So we wanted it not as large as the committee, but large enough to get a number of voices from the areas that are identified in the master plan. Folks with, either with personal or professional expertise in some of those areas or passions or interest in those. So we will, as a board, start socializing some names, perhaps having some interviews, looking at talent bank applications, all of that, and we will do all our appointments. There is an appointment from the select board as well, and then try to get started as soon as we can. There may be interest from members of the master plan committee that hadn't had enough of us prior, and I'm confident that we'll get a very strong group together. Emily and I have been talking about at least the initial phase of that, once we kind of get our arms around it and people do get familiar with all those recommendations, is doing this in much the same way with some of those other kind of core committees, right? These are all the recommendations that might be Affordable Housing Trust or HDIC or what have you, and just meet with those folks, familiarize themselves with the history of the master plan, where those recommendations fall, find out whether they're already on the minds of some of those, maybe work already underway or conversations already underway, so that we can start prioritizing some of the work that goes on with that implementation committee. We have staggered terms, two-year terms, for the committee, so that there can be fresh faces, new ideas, all of that kind of stuff, and new interpretations of the plan as it goes forward. And then, of course, the last and most important bullet, the staff support, which we are going to definitely need, because there's a lot to be done here. There's, thankfully, the capacity I think we have that, thanks to you, we have built in the community planning and economic development departments here. You know, I feel very good about where we are in being able to actually do this implementation work.
Excellent. Well, thank you. It certainly was a wonderful opportunity and working with the group, and it's a really great piece of work. So it's really exciting to see this move forward. And as you mentioned, Gordon, some things have happened and we've been able to implement without a formal implementation committee, but this will really move us forward in the right direction. Certainly, our select board goals for the year that we're kind of working on and will likely be voting on next week are very much aligned with the master plan. So, you know, we're certainly committed to helping this move along and, you know, help remove obstacles where we can. One of the things that I think the committee found frustrating was it was hard not to get caught up in implementation as we were making the recommendations, thinking about complexity, timeline, funding. So we were continually reminded, you know, we should put together recommendations without budget dollars associated with it. That wasn't our, that wasn't part of our process then. It obviously now is part of the process.
Right. We've gone from aspirational to actual pragmatic, which we were trying to avoid during that process.
Yes. So, but it'll be great to see it come into action. So thank you. Thank you for all the work on this and your leadership. And Emily, I know you're supporting this quite heavily, so thank you.
Yeah, definitely behind the scenes. But what we have done is taken the implementation matrix from the master plan, which is really static in the form that we have it, hard copy or PDF, and converted it into a spreadsheet. So now, you know, it doesn't have to be presented sequentially. We can, you know, search and sort by the responsible party, and so now it's easier to disseminate to each of those agencies that is identified as making something actionable what in fact they're responsible for. So you, this board received a version of that. We've added a column for status so that folks can report back to the master plan committee. We can track things. If for some reason, you know, the complexity of one of those recommendations turns out to be higher than what was anticipated, the implementation committee can recommend that the planning board amend the master plan. They're responsible for that by state law, and we want this to be a living document that can be carried out.
Definitely. Excellent. Thank you. Joe, question?
I just want to pick up on what Emily said of making this a living document, because other towns do master plans and they do sit on the shelf. And the fact that you have committed to making this a living document, that we honor what went into it is, that in itself is huge. So just want to thank you for that. I also want to point out that there's the master plan, but this board and other boards have entered into a memorandum of understanding with respect to budget and that there are budget constraints that may restrict certain things we can do, and so we will do our best to mediate the tensions that could arise there, but we have made a commitment to the residents with our memorandum of understanding about how budgets will be governed and what sorts of increases, and, which doesn't mean that we should sacrifice our aspirations, just means we need to understand the fiscal implications.
To govern is to choose, right?
Yes, exactly. And then finally, you mentioned, Gordon, the cheat sheet you've got in terms of what boxes you can check. And I think it'd be tremendously helpful if that was somehow made available to the public online, so we could see and share in the victories that, hey, yes, check that box, which would be really great. But other than that, just thank you very much.
So the master plan committee was an all-star team of volunteers, and the work that was done was tremendous, and obviously, my wife was on the committee, so.
I was going to say, your spouses are all-stars.
During the pandemic, I was, I listened into all the meetings, and Gordon, your leadership was tremendous. It was a very big committee, and the way you kept people focused on point, the way you moved the process along was very well done, and our community owes you a tremendous debt of thanks for leading that effort. I know it was a tremendous amount of time, so thank you for that.
It was, thank you. Can I say, it was a thrill, right? As I said, and I said to them, like, a couple of times a month, I get to spend a couple hours with 14 really smart people thinking about really important stuff, right? And given what we were going through at that time, right, it felt a lot less isolating being able to do that and know that we were advancing the master plan. So it was energizing for me, right? And the reason the dynamic worked was not because of me, it was because of the 14 other people, right? It's not like I had to do a lot of policing and all this kind of stuff, right? It was, it all, it flowed really incredibly well and incredibly collaboratively. It was, it just, I think it made all of us optimistic for the town and then for taking the plan further. So, yeah, no, it was, it was a unique time, perhaps, or just a great chemistry.
Great process, great result. What do you, it might be too early to tell me this, but what are you thinking of a committee size for the implementation committee? And you have here representative core elements. Are you still working on what those core elements would be, or do you have anything in mind?
Yeah, I mean, I think the core elements are what you would reflect in the master plan, sort of, I would say, in no particular order. Yeah, the seven chapters. So environmental and sustainability broadly. You could include natural resources in sort of that whole bucket. Economic development, housing, transportation, right? We can, you know, certainly facilities. We were well positioned in this town with both current and former volunteers and a whole number of committees in these areas, right? So as long as those folks have enough in the tank that they want to get back into the master plan implementation part, I think we're gonna, we'll come up with a great group. We'll probably start with the seven and see how that looks, if we need to add two more, because there's gaps in some areas or something like that. Either immediately or over time, we can do that.
There is one actual member of the master plan implementation committee, so the planning board voted to create the committee already in April and voted to make Gordon their representative. The structure of the committee, the representative from the planning board would act as the chair, but then the one other mandatory member or representative would be from this board.
And just one quick comment, obviously, I'll defer to the implementation committee on how to do this, but to Joe's point, with the failed master plan report that we had, I think maybe now two years ago, one of the things that we did early was we adopted some of the policy issues, the things we could do quickly. For example, we put, we decided we're going to put everything under the rec department, going to be led by Mark Dorell. We're going to let Mark do scheduling for all the fields, select board fields, school committee fields, recreation fields. And then we kind of went after the bigger item of how are we going to fund it? So then we worked on an agreement between the school committee, us, rec department about the funding issue. And we're still working at the, looking at the bigger picture items, but we were able to start quickly with implementation of the policy-type related decisions. So that might be an approach, but obviously, I'll defer to you and your committee on how to best go after this, and thanks for taking it on.
We're looking forward to it. Because, yeah, the idea that it sits on the shelf, right? I couldn't live with myself, but I would have at least 14 people kind of picked off at that as well. So we're looking forward to getting going and knowing that we, that everything hasn't waited, right, and that there has been progress, I think is a testament to the town as much as the plan.
Yeah, and the public, I think, does want to hear about it. We had a tremendous amount of participation during the visioning sessions that you were referencing.
That had nothing to do with the food that was being served?
Or the one we held at Ralph's downtown. We tried to cover the bases, shall we say.
We went to where the people were.
Yeah, exactly. Right. Exactly. But, no, there was interest, that's all.
In all seriousness, I think people are committed to it and want to know about it and hear about it and know that it's being implemented and participate in the ongoing process, since they were so invested in the beginning. I do feel confident that that shared vision is truly shared, since we did have so many people participate. So, thank you. Kudos to you. Excited to hear more as this moves forward.
All right. Keep you posted.
Yeah, thank you. Next on the agenda is appointments. Don't believe we have any for this evening. Oh, actually, I didn't ask for a public comment. Judy, you're still with us. Did you want to add anything?
No, I, no, I was just glad to listen in and really so impressed with the work that the master plan committee did. So thank you, Gordon and Emily and Liz and everybody. So good to see you all.
Thank you. Good to see you. Yes, thank you, Judy.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay. So we don't have any appointments for tonight, but just a reminder, you can still submit talent bank applications. We are starting interviews this Thursday and have interviews the following week as well. But there are lots of open positions and lots to do, so I hope people will continue to submit talent bank applications. All right, next is public comment. I don't see anyone left. Next, town administrator and select board reports. Do you want to start, Art?
I have nothing tonight.
I'm Michelle.
I don't either, thank you.
Joe?
Nothing this evening.
Bill?
Just two items. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of participating in a mock town hall by third-grade students throughout the town, and it was absolutely wonderful, wonderful event, led by Beverly Vernon, but a lot of other groups were involved with it. Hingham Education Foundation, Old Ship Church, the PTOs, all the teachers, and many, many other groups, and legal and voters, and it was just really a fantastic event to see the students really put a warrant together, advocate for positions, speak against positions. I actually, my daughter spoke on an article I spoke against her, and I lost the debate. So it was Ramsey versus Ramsey, and I came out on the other side of it. But also, on Monday, at the State House, Janine Shusecki is going to be recognized by the governor for her work in female veteran issues throughout the state, and she's going to be receiving a gubernatorial citation. For those who know Janine, she does a tremendous amount of work for our veterans community, all behind the scenes, all very quietly, and I'm just thrilled that she's receiving this honor in representing Hingham's women veterans at the State House on Monday. That's it.
Yes, we're also celebrating this week. Thank you, Bill. I had the honor of going to the high school graduation over the weekend, so sincere congratulations to the class of 2023. I was very impressed, despite the weather, it was an impressive showing of not just school spirit, but this class is really known for its being so inclusive and having unified sports and drama and arts, and it's a really impressive group, so excited to see where they will go next. We also had the pleasure of meeting with the eighth-grade civic students last week, so lots going on in town with our students. The third, eighth, and 10th graders are all working on civics projects, so it's exciting to see the civic engagement and the enthusiasm at all ages, so certainly encourage that to continue. That's it for me. Anything else? All right, you ready to adjourn?
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Joe?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Aye.
I'm an a as well.